This conference will now be recorded.
Would you stand as able and join me as we have our invocation? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance. The civilian city council, mayor, administrator, staff, and members meet to discuss and make decisions that affect us all. We are grateful for their service and dedication to this community. We ask your protection for all first responders, police, sheriff, fire, hospital staff, CMTs, ambulance, all who serve and protect us on a daily basis, often at the risk of their own well-being. We are grateful for the United States of America, our beloved constitutional republic, for which so many military and civilian lives have been lost in its creation and preservation for nearly 245 years. We must continue this preservation as there are factions who would destroy it, not only from without, but sadly from within. And now, as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. All this we pray in the name of a risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
And Bliss?
Here.
Ellen, Cross is not going to be here tonight, but we appreciate your service. A few minutes from previous meetings, unless you do approve. Second, all on paper?
Aye.
opposed? Steve, Bliss, you're on.
I think Steve would like for me to do it.
Okay. John asked Rhian to cover for me, so why don't you have her do it?
Okay. Is that okay?
Sure.
(Laughter) Okay, so for finance administration tonight, first off, we are going to hear from Kelvin about the budget.
Okay. Thank you. So basically what we'll do is we'll go through kind of some highlights of where we left off last meeting. And so just kind of some of the things that are highlighted, the things that you have scored, and they're going to look at at this point in time through your budget work session, what is included in the budget, what is not. And then some we've got highlighted in yellow are things that we did, an alternative if we did something different. So going down through the general fund, you ranked 13 items during your strategic planning session. And coming in at number one was the fire pension transition to loggers, and that is funded. Dangerous buildings demolition funding level at $100,000, and it is funded. 353 neighborhood revitalization seed money at $200,000 came in as third, and is funded. Number four was the police recruitment incentives at $30,000. It is funded. Non-lethal weapons and rap expansion was number five, and it is also funded. Number six came in as life study to expand the 353 area to the downtown area, to incorporate the downtown area, and that is funded in the current draft. Add fire staff vehicle came in at number seven and is included in the current draft. Retail recruitment consulting at $60,000. And there was a certain amount of discussion that came in at number eight, a certain amount of discussion that we wanted to leave that funding in, but we were not particularly, we wanted to make sure that we bid that out and we're not particularly fond of the folks that came and made the presentation, but we liked the concept, if I understood that correctly. The drone program expansion at $15,000. That's to expand the, to do an indoor, a low fighting zone drone and a rather inexpensive training zone. And that is currently funded in the draft. The continued brand identity messaging, this again had a lot of conversations surrounding it. And we had in the strategic planning, we talked about $150,000. And if you remember, Callis and Associates came in and proposed two different, a different budget, kind of one that says, okay, here's 150 and here's 75. So what we put in the draft was the 75,000. And then there was some conversation Monday, last Monday, about bidding that out and having different proposals from additional folks. And so I have that in my notes that we left in the $75,000 left. Medical UTV vehicle, there was, came in at number 11. And I am sorry, I don't know why my screen is only showing 11 items, but the medical UTV vehicle is shown up as an alternate. And if you remember, a police chief came up with a way to fund the, through selling some surplus property and then do a unit that gets close to what Chief Irwin was talking about, but doesn't get quite all the way there. And I don't know what happened to my slideshow here.[394.02][394.02](Laughter) I don't know how that got messed up there. I'm sorry. Number 12 was the cemetery niche columbarium at $20,000, and that is funded. And then coming in last was the city health department at $90,000, and that is not funded at the current time. For transportation, we had only two items, and both of those really are delayed for grant funding. Our current grant is for the box hanger, the 65 by 65 box hanger, and that is funded. And then these two items are for longer-term planning. Capital improvement funds, there was 25 different items, and the sidewalk and curb funding level came in as the top priority. And we had done a CBPG grant for that. And so what that is actually in the budget right now is that $1.1 million funding level, $500,000 of that is funded by grants. And then the matching $500,000 and then an additional $100,000 was put in there to do things outside of that grant.
So that's $500,000 grant, so we won't know the outcome of that for some time probably?
Yeah. Coming in at number two was Thompson Boulevard repaving at, from 10th to 16th Street, and that is funded. The fire squad vehicles, two units, there was a significant amount of conversation about that. And what is currently in the draft and what came out of the conversation was to fund one of those at $260,000 with fully equipped. And so that's what is currently in the draft. Sidewalk 65, Highway 7th to Liberty Park Boulevard was, came in at number four, is funded. Number five was funded, and that's the design of the three-station model for the fire station. Stormwater project funding was, came in at number six, and that was, we had talked about a $1 million funding level. And what we did in the draft is we split those out, that was, that actually covered three, the next three projects. And so we just picked off the next project, which is funded at $665,000. The alley reactivation came in at number seven, and we funded that at $250,000, half of what we had talked about during the strategic planning session. Coming in at number eight was the 32nd and Limit Lane additions, and that is a cost share program with the county, or with the county, with the state. And so we have funded $650,000 in the budget as a cost share with the, with the state, with MoDOT. 50 Highway and Winchester Lane additions, again funded at $350,000. Sidewalk for the State Fair Boulevard, 50 Highway, 3rd Street to 65 Highway is unfunded at this point. That's kind of where we drew the line that we were able to get funded. And so the rest of these are not going to be funded unless there's an alternate there. Engineering from 16th to 24th is unfunded. Number 12 was Clinton Road brand, the 32nd Street is unfunded. Coming in at number 13 was the downtown decorative lights purchase, and that is unfunded. The Bike Way 3rd from Katy Depot to Liberty Park was unfunded. Extend Winchester from 16th Street, the fact that it's a $3.2 million project, is unfunded. It came in at number 15. Number 16, 16th Street Complete Street, and that was part out of the complimentary plan. And at this point, we're not able to fund that this year, anyway. The Bike Way Amtrak Depot to Katy Depot is unfunded. Number 18, North Harding and Booneville Highway to Highway 50 to the airport improvements is unfunded. Pacific and Ohio Streets, 2nd and Osage parking lots is unfunded. Number 20 was the State Fair upgrade, Main to Proenergy Drive and Roundabouts at both ends, at Proenergy and at Main Street. And what we were able to do is break that down, and we think that it is really important to get the surface resurfaced, but we can't get to, since it's rated so well, we can't get to the roundabouts. But we still need to at least resurface it, so we broke that out and funded that at $380,000. And then 21 was 65 Highway and Sacagawea Traffic Line. And 22 was the 50 Highway Katy Trail Bridge over past Harding, and that again would be a partnership with MoDOT, and it is not funded at this point. Monument and Wayfinding and Signings, that was part of the brand launch and getting all of that pulled together. And since that came in at number 23, we, it is not funded at this point. Number 24 was the 65 Highway ramps at Main Street. And again, that would be a significant cost share with MoDOT because that, those are actually connecting one MoDOT road to another. But we were looking at it from a standpoint, it was, can we offer some match to help them get over the hump there to get that funded? That is in the PAC, I think it's number four or five. And the 32nd Street and Limit was number two or three, somewhere around in there. And then number 25 was extend Proenergy Drive to Oak Grove, and it is currently unfunded. Looking at some other notable items, we spent a lot of time, rightfully so, talking about wages, particularly this year, and the particular challenges we've got with the great resignation and the labor shortages and the labor inflation that we're seeing. And so we funded a step increase as well as a 5.7% COLA. So it gets to a seven point, approximately 7.7% average increase for all employees. Finance, added back a staff position that we had taken out when we brought in the management of the water department. We took out, I think it was three people, and so we're recommending adding one back, and that is currently funded. The fire added overtime for more instances of call-ins for fires, that is funded. The fire overtime for training and departmental meeting is also funded. The police special operations overtime fund is funded. The safety manager, again, there was some significant conversation about that, and it is currently unfunded at this point. City health department, that's duplication from what I just said earlier, was the unfunded. MML Conference for Council is funded, I think it's $5,500 or something like that. MML Legislative Conference for Council is funded. Clean title work is also funded. Pioneer Trail Sues is funded. There was some conversation about whether or not we wanted to continue this or not, and at this point, it is currently in the budget. Fire hydraulic hearse tools, and again, there was some conversation, Chief Irwin explained what that was, and that is currently funded. The fire vehicle stabilization struts, stabilization struts is funded. The fire updated furniture is funded. And then the fire electric pole system is unfunded at this point. Police Sergeant West Point Model Training is funded. Police Investigations and Homicides Training is funded. The crowd control barricade is funded, but we moved that to the capital improvement projects fund. And I think it's $61,000, and that is in that capital improvement. Community development e-ticketing is funded. Community development promotions and events is funded. Community Development Main Street Conference is funded. Rehang the Christmas lights is funded. The National Registration Nomination for Victorian Towers, that's consulting work to get that done. I think it's $100,000 total, $50,000 grant fund and $50,000 match is funded. Cemetery replaced the flatbed crude cab truck, there was some discussion about that and some alternatives discussed about doing a van instead of a, instead of a truck for the purposes of the inmates, but at this point, it's unfunded. And my recommendation is that if we're going to look at it for transporting inmates, then we need to trade the current bus, the 22 passenger bus that we've got, on a 15 passenger bus, which is going to make more sense.
(Inaudible)
Animal Control e-ticketing is funded. Again, there was a little discussion about that. Trap, neuter, and release, feral catch program is funded. Fleet maintenance, the upgrade to lift, the compressor and the tire changer are all funded. The utility rate hearings are coming up. That will be on the 21st. This is just kind of giving you a summary of what was out in the public notice. And so what we're asking for input on and what you will be considering, that is in the budget, so it kind of ties to the budget. This is what's anticipated in the budget and what's needed for that, to make that budget work, is the water rates will be a rate increase of 2%. I did the math for an average customer, that's about 47 cents per month. The sewer rates, we had to take, we're looking at or proposing a higher increase there because we're still not covering our capital needs. And so we're looking at a 10% increase there, and that's part of the reason why we were trying to keep the water rates so low, or the increase so low, is, and then that would be a 3.75, $3.75 increase to the average customer, average residential customer. Sanitation, we would increase a dollar and a half and then increase the senior citizens' discount by another dollar so that they would only see a 50 cent increase for the senior citizens. And again, this is still not covering our capital needs nor paying off the loan from past losses.
We did have a conversation today with Don, how that works for the senior citizens. So the seniors, so explain that, how that's going to happen, if we do it currently.
Hey, Don, could you go to the microphone? Sorry, Steve's online. Thank you. Our system doesn't really have a good way of detecting an age, and so we rely on the customers to call and inform us if they are eligible for the senior discount, so.
So that age is?
60.
And they can come in and, and it can come in and show their identification?
Actually, even if they just called, we probably have record of the date of birth because we've taken ID at the time the account's set up. The drawback is if we, if we set it up totally based on age, oftentimes we will go to the historic weights that are set on an account, and that would not stay applicable. So it's one of those things, we kind of need the customers to help us report, so.
So as this discount increases, I think in the way the situation, they'll probably get more activity on that discount.
Yes. And we'll automatically apply the 50 cent difference to anybody that currently has it, but yes, it may bring some people out to make them aware of it.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, Don, you, I don't know if you've gone back far enough or you've been here long enough to look at it. Take you back a little bit in time, years ago, when we got into the stormwater thing with DNR, and if you want to speak up also, you're welcome to back there. You recall what the rate jump was at the time we had to do that? Do you happen to know?
That I didn't have to know.
It basically tripled in 2010. It was right at three times what it went up.
Okay. And I think from that point on, we've tried to just gradually, for the public's knowledge, to raise the rate to keep it in line. And keeping in mind, I think we're sitting on, we're going to need another plant here shortly for about 40 to 60 million dollars, which probably going to take a while to.
Yeah. Yeah, there, actually, from what I recall, and Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was, there was a long time period before 2010 that there was no rate increases. 2010, because of the DNR administrative order consent and the borrowing, the $30 million, 29 something, roughly $30 million to pay that back, they determined we needed, since we tripled the rate at that time. And then there was no rate increases again for about three or four years, maybe even five years. There was no rate increases again. And then we did a rate study, and that rate study came back and said that we needed to increase rates again about 25%. And we did not want to push that onto the consumer again. We did have sufficient reserves that we took, made the conscious decision that we would raise a little bit at a time, a little bit. We put out a plan that we'd do about 8% per year until we got caught up. This gets us about there, but we're still, costs are continuing to escalate, of course the wages are going to affect that again. And so really, we're at the point, and this year particularly, we had a lot of pump failures, a lot of equipment failures. And so, you know, we were trying to put Band-Aids on equipment to get us along to where we could raise these rates slowly. But you make an excellent point that we also have, we know within five years, we have to have North Plant replaced, and that's a $60 million, is it not?
$60 million estimate.
It wasn't too long ago, I asked you that question, and it was 40 million.
Yeah.
See how you are?
And one price has gone anywhere from 40 to 70% this year. So it's all about winning.
Do you also know where we rank in the state for our actual, what we charge?
We're an average, right about 10.
Okay. And there's some bar two in a cost study, or a rate study, Burns and Mack, I think. And that's part of the master plan that they're doing.
So this council, in past six, seven years, the council's been very good about addressing our obligation. Past councils, it was politically easy to say, let's don't increase the rates, and that's how we got that one. So it's our responsibility and our obligation to make this happen. We're trying to make it as easy as possible on the customer. And that's going to be, and unfortunately, it's going to continue on in the future, the way it's going to be, the reality of it. And we, as this council, is paying the price for the lack of responsibility of part of council.
I don't, I don't think anybody really wants to raise rates.
No.
It's just the nature of the business.
It's just not, it's not the best political thing to do. Anyway, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. That's a difficult thing to do, and it's a reality of it.
Do you have a dollar figure on how close these rate increases on sanitation sewer rates get us to break even?
Yes. The sanitation, it gets us to break even. It gets us just under a cash, it gets us a little bit of a cash loss, but it does not set aside any money for capital replacement. I mean, you know, because when I say it's a cash loss, you're adding back the depreciation, so you're not even generating the amount of depreciation that you're, to be able to do equipment. So it gets, it stops the bleeding, but it doesn't fix the problem. Same way with sewer rates. The sewer rates is, I'm sorry, is, does get us, it gets us a little above break even, so we are setting aside a little bit for capital replacement. But as soon as we have to pull that trigger on $60 million with the debt, we're going to have to increase it to be able to do that.
I know, I know we all have received from constituents' concerns about recycling, and that recycling, if we continue with curbside, it would increase that monthly dollar amount significantly. So we're doing the best we can with that. Until that rate's come back, it used to be the Chinese law bills products from us, the classics, the fiberboard, the metal, glass, since we do have an outlet for glasses, it's probably a break even, I'm not sure where we are on that. But hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to do better with that. If you add that rate costly on curbside pickup, I would imagine it would increase probably four or five dollars, maybe more than that, for the cost.
I see, and I see a future with dual stream recycling. The issue with those recyclables with the single stream is, you're getting contamination levels through the roof.
Yeah.
And nobody's taken, if you're, I think we were sending 25% of what we were sending to China was contaminated. They took that way back, so.
Yeah. And that's a problem. Now, Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but we were actually, the city was actually doing pretty well. I mean, our customers were doing pretty well at not having contamination in the recycling.
(Inaudible) at the hole does an excellent job when they choose to recycle. Everybody else comes off the problem. Even the landfill company, which takes their recyclables to their, their material recovery facility, but yeah, we had clean material. So we were fortunate. But what I will bring up, what everybody needs to hear, of course, the problem with sanitation is every year, our landfill disposal is going up like 2%, per ton. So, and we do not look for that percentage to drop in the future.
Yeah. And that is our largest expenditure, second largest being personnel, and third largest fuel. So, you know, they're all, they're all costs that are going up. And, you know, of course, fuel prices are going up dramatically, so, you know, and when you're at a position where you're losing, you know, trying to, trying to keep your head above water, you know, I mean, I just don't see how we could do anything less than that.
Yeah. And that, the, well, the transfer station, that brings up a misconception that it might be good to address. The, all the recyclables that we collect at the materials management site go to a transfer station at the landfill at GFL, and then they are transferred to Harrisonville where they are recycled. So that stuff is not going into the landfill. That was something, a misconception that was out there.
But that, that's not happening now, is it?
We have four separated recyclers, half the materials management side.
Okay.
Yes. And it does go to the transfer station inside the gate. You go up the hill for the disposal, and you go to the ride to the transfer station.
Okay. But when we were doing, where I think some of that is coming from, this is when we were doing the curbside recycling, basically, when we took the curbside, the single stream recycling, when we took that to the, to the landfill, yeah, they, they took it and took it to their reprocessing center. But at the time that we dumped it, we had to pay the same amount for that trash, or as we did for trash. And then they would give us credit back on whatever they could get out of. So we were going through all the costs to collect it and keep it separated. So we were going through all the costs to collect it and keep it separated, it recycling from the trash. Dump it, pay the same dump fee as we were for trash and getting no credit back.
Yeah.
And it was ending up in the landfill because they didn't have one. Maybe not here, but it was ending up somewhere landfill.
Right, anything that was plastic at that time, they did not have a purpose. So we were getting money from paper, basically, because they were separating half metal and glass. We were screwing ourselves at containers, as people would think, otherwise it goes to the landfill. Single, seven inch material that goes into your trash is glass and it can be easily recycled. I'll go down now.
And we are.
And we are.
Okay, I did do a summary here, the uh, if you took it, looked at the average customer and added all of those changes together and took a look at their average bill today versus the average bill with these increases. The net overall increase would be seven point two percent, which is just under the inflation rate. Doesn't make it any easier to swallow, but it does kind of do a sanity check for me that, or at least in the ballpark. Anything else?
Uh, Kevin, uh, are people outside to see like, how much is there a increase on the water or?
Uh, well, it'd be percentage wise, the same way. Uh, but they get, let's see, the water is one and a half times, is it two times? Two times on the water on the base rate. The per gallon rate is the same inside versus outside the city limits. The sewer rates is two and a half times on the base rate and then the the volume charge is also. I get that right?
I did, we, last year, we did raise the grade of people in the county participation with the recycling. Every day they go up, I would maintain that same level of assurance.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Uh, what's what's the say, you you?
Oh, the 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 permit fee, the the, yeah, the annual charge, yeah, it was doubled last year and it's the same this year. So a hundred and twenty?
One hundred and thirty two, then.
Okay.
I think it was sixty two.
They kind of, it's a one time deal, they buy a permit.
Yeah, an annual charge and then they get a sticker for their window and then they can go out there as many times as they want.
And their face is the same problem when we were having is the cost of their, of where we're sticking out their garbage, if their doors increasing significantly. Any other questions?
Regarding utility rates or other items?
Utility. Okay, so what's next? Uh, we will incorporate any changes that we have during this meeting, uh, and then uh, we will bring those back. And I will have a question at the end of this, uh, that whether or not you want another work session. We can schedule another one for Monday if you all want. And then the the public hearing that I mentioned is scheduled for March twenty first at the beginning of that meeting that, um, and during that hearing, we encourage anybody from the public to have any input whatsoever on the budget. And then also specifically, there will be a hearing that is required for the the sewer rate increases. But then we also add into that the water and the and the trash, although it's not required. I think it's good, good practice and and good transparency and good uh, opportunity for folks to provide their input. And again, nobody likes increases, rate increases, but um, it's it's the reality of the situation to make it work, so. Uh, and then council considers the, for adoption, the uh, both the rate and the uh, budget itself at your, after the hearing, at your twenty first meeting. And then uh, also just a note there that if you all want more time, if you all want to spend more time going through it, you can take all the way up till March thirty first to adopt the budget. Um, and actually, there is things in the statute that if you don't adopt the budget, there's basically things that can kick in. We don't want to get there, um, with per ver credit rating and those kinds of things. And I don't think it's, I don't think we're anywhere close to that, but we can use that if you all want. So, uh, at this point, I've got the spreadsheet that where we left off, um, and uh, we can go through any of those items. Um, sorry, let me get that on your screen.
Kevin, if we could go back to where the item was on the Thirty Second Street, that one point three million?
Uh huh.
If it's a cost share, does it need to stay as the one point three million with, what we're actually going to spend at six fifty?
Yes, and that's what it what is in there. Basically, I've got one point three million dollars in, it's an expense and six hundred and fifty thousand in, it's a revenue. So the net in the budget, you know.
Okay, I agree, because it just showed the one point three.
Yeah.
On the fire part, it shows six fifty. That that was the question that I had, thank you.
I have an item I'd like to see if I can advocate for one more time. Um, I'd like to advocate for bringing on the city health inspection, health inspector for the city health department. Um, I think being able to bring uh, this position underneath the wing of the city will allow us to have a little bit more uh, control over it to making sure that the job gets done properly and make sure uh, the taxpayer and citizens are are taken care of safely as well. Currently, we we already perform the fire inspections, we perform the building inspections in the public works department. We perform any stormwater inspections as well. And I think being able to bring health inspections under our wing will be able to, will be able to encompass the public safety as a whole with being able to do that. Um, so, you know, we we won't have to worry about any other outside source. We won't have to worry about working with any outside individual. We'll be able to do this in-house. Um, with bringing on this position, uh, we're going to be able to issue fines, we could issue permits. We would be able to issue uh, food establishment ordinances as well. So it makes sense that if we have this opportunity here to make sure that we can fully encompass public safety when it comes to our inspections, I think we can, we should go ahead and jump on that. Like I said, this is about making sure that the taxpayer, the citizens are protected and being able to bring in the health inspector and health department will be able to make sure that that job is done and gets done properly. So that was just a, two cents I'd like to advocate for that one more time.
Uh, my question on that ninety thousand dollars, how does that number derive? I was heard that the county does has two employees that are full time health inspectors. I have no idea what the payroll is on that.
Yeah, um, I I, what I did is if I looked at, um, basically what our building inspectors are at and I did that total cost of their, you know, their labor plus benefits and all of that. And then I added for, uh, you know, some office, office space, travel, training, all of that. And uh, you know, frankly, it's it's a pretty rough number. I didn't, I didn't put a lot of detail in it, but I I, that was my best guess as to what it would, what it would take to get that started. And that's just one person.
You know, this is, okay. I think the concept of this is a good idea in in the long run. The question that I have with this is, are we looking at a position as an inspector? Or are we looking at it to name it as a department? And to me, if you go to a department and and our attorney may have to give a little guidance on this here, but if we go to a department, we have a city health department, where do we fall under the state statutes of what's required that department to do? And and what I'm going after here is, we just come out of a mess with the COVID stuff that came through our county department, should we say. Do we want to get that deep into the weeds with this on the city side because we have that department here? I know, uh, Mr. McClure, who's the mayor down in Springfield, is a good friend of mine and they have their own health department, figure six. Okay, but that being said, when they got into the COVID mess, it was a, it was a nightmare for the city to handle. And I understand the inspector portion of it, probably a good idea. Uh, we'll see. But if you're going to put a headline on it as being a department, what's that going to force us into being, have them to do besides just that inspection deal? Go ahead.
Sure, so, um, so you bring up some really good points. Um, you know, I think the question, maybe if I'm understanding correctly, is, is, well, could we, if we bring on the physician, could we somehow maybe separate? Or do we have to bring in the entire health?
That's the point, yes.
Yeah, health, and that's something I I would definitely have to look a little further into because none of my other cities really have their own health departments, although I think many of them would like to have their own health departments, especially after the way COVID was handled. So, um, so I'm not exactly sure if it's an all or nothing, or if you could just craft an ordinance or a section of your code that kind of just says, okay, our health department only does these things, it doesn't do these things. So I just want to get a, you a little bit more information before I, yeah.
And and along that same line, it it was with under the city guidance being if we have the inspector versus slash the department type thing, what can that inspector then in 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 the state side, I mean, you always have to refer to that state statute side where we're at there. What can that state or our city inspector do that, or I should say that the statute would allow us to do with just an inspector? I think there's some questions here that before we say, hey, if we want to do this and spend the money right away, we just need to answer those.
Yeah, I I do know, you know, when we were looking at uh, like the uh, the lodging ordinance and those kinds of things. And then also when we were, you know, dealing with the COVID and those kinds of things, there were, uh, you know, what I recall from those state statutes, and again, I wasn't researching for this ethically, but what I recall from the state statutes, many of those, it'll have, it'll have, it has language by unless a city has its own department, then it, then it falls to the county. So I, it it, you know, yes, it would take, it takes some research, but I think that, you know, if 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 you, if the city sets up that, okay, we're going to handle this piece, then the county no longer has jurisdiction. And we, you know, so we would take jurisdiction of where we wanted to take jurisdiction. Now, I'm I'm like Jennifer, I don't know if we, if it's an all or nothing, or if it's, you know, I'd I'd have to read the statute for that, so that's a good point.
So the county still going to have responsibility of doing those kinds of sections within the county.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's going to be some simplicity and what's going to be the most efficient way? As it's currently set up with the two inspectors and whatever they're doing. I think if they became overwhelmed with this pandemic, I think that must be on what they can handle. Uh, and we learned from that today. I think the point you're making is very good. I, with my standpoint as a restaurant tutor, I would say they do a good job of inspection. There's very thorough, it's much better back in the days when we had in-house inspection. Uh, they may come in and smoke cigarettes and such, and you can face the, sell a paper and buy a sandwich. You know, I mean, but they, these guys are very, very good, very thorough and they follow, follow the guideline very thoroughly. But I think what's really thorough for this, I got a sandwich coming, because we've, we've all received lots of complaints.
Right, and it, it just makes sense to me that we'd be able to encompass every form of inspection. We also, we already issued several permits and it makes sense that if it's happening in civilian, we can kind of have that oversight.
It's going to put them in an awkward position. I think they're probably going to be better managers now because of this, what they've gone through.
Yes, and I'm not, this isn't any.
Because they're going to, you know, they're going to still have to deal with the inspection in the county.
Yeah, of course.
You know, so it's going to be.
But they, but they would have less.
Yeah.
Less, less to do because of that.
We might be able, if that is, we might be able to soar upon the people if that's, I don't know.
Yeah.
Those, those people that do that have pretty good work, they're, they're not a dime that's. And the city could do.
Mr. Mayor, you've been around a long time. Want to take you back a little bit in time. We used to have the city health inspector.
Now, this is.
Period. And why was that disbanded? Do you know why it was disbanded or what happened with that program or what happened?
Well, it was just a bad efficiency we had, you know, I'm thinking about the the dynamic of it. We've had, how many more food establishments open in in civilian in that time? And more demands on it, on on public safety. You know, I can probably say that, uh, you know, that foodborne diseases are the biggest cause of illness in civilian. The people feel poor, it's either from home or from from a cafeteria or going out for dinner. And that public safety aspect is critical, all those aspects. So we needed somebody that, Harry had many cats, she was the weed person and it's many other things, so. And that's a full time, full time gig, we said firsthand, and food establishment.
In in town's defense, and and I'm just going to throw this out there and maybe I'm way out of order, but what would be wrong with tabling this? Do we get more interest, so we keep, keep this on the table?
Yeah, I think Tom's point is well picked, isn't it? He thinks it's, he's one of them, he really likes to put it back into the budget. I don't know if he has it, has the rest of the council support it or not.
Well.
Is it anybody else who did that?
Hey.
Hey.
You ready?
(laughing).
Anybody want to jump in?
John. So, can you hear me?
I'm listening.
John, you, I get about one out of John's words, so it's really a bit hard for me to follow this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I did that essentially, I didn't want you to hear me.
Well, you, it worked.
I'm not going to repeat myself, how about that?
I I I think, I, what I've heard, my my basic concern is I don't want to see us do duplication of service. I think that's a waste of taxpayer money. And I think tabling is a good idea, I think you need to do research.
We can do some more research, Thomas, you're going to have.
Before you move forward.
I mean, we could get together, yeah.
What it's, what it's taking, does this look like putting it in the budget?
Well, let's see, let's see what the consensus is.
Yeah.
Ready?
Is it clickable or non-clickable?
We look at it.
It's clickable.
Let's see, let's look at it and see.
It's clickable.
Uh, I think we need more info.
Okay.
I think throwing a, throwing a number out there and I think that before it's clickable, we need more information.
It's not clickable. Bob? Clickable? I don't think it's clickable, yes. Gina?
Hmm. I'm in the middle.
Yeah, I I am, I'm in the middle. I think it's clickable, but also, uh, going with our attorney saying, let's look into it so we see how it has to be ran or how it has to be set up, then I think that's what we need to do so that when we go into this, we can say, okay, this is exactly what this position would be looking at and they would leave this alone, or this is exactly what they can't do.
So then it makes sense then to budget for it, to do the research for it, but if it doesn't look like it's going to work, we don't spend the money?
So I I would just recommend, if I could, um, actually, the opposite is to leave it out of the budget and then, uh, and then do the research. And then that way, then when we do the research, we would have more hard numbers. And then we can come back and do a budget amendment and add it back in. You know, and to, at that point, you're going to be looking at something less than the full year, so. Um, and uh, and then also, I guess, part of my recommendation, or part of what drives that recommendation as well is, is, you know, we have a good deal of uncertainty with the the national economy and the the inflation and where all that's going. And and so, um, uh, you know, that gives us a little bit of wait and see to see where revenues are going and what inflation does and all of that. While we're doing that research and and coming up with the particulars of how really would that work.
Thomas, I think you're.
I think you can see, there is.
I think you can see, there is some metrics to be accounted for.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I wanted to generate. I don't think we've had a proper discussion on that. I brought it up once, maybe twice, so I'm glad we were able to have a discussion and see some importance in it.
Thank you, sir. How do we make this before the council? Will we table? What's the ruling?
Well, there's, there's no, there's no ordinance, so we're not doing anything.
What I'm hearing is that you've directed staff to take a deeper dive into what it could look like.
Yeah, I think we need to make a decision. I'll make a decision.
That would be public safety, I think. Because that's where I would look at, at, uh, uh, at county health department. That's what it's there for, is the public safety.
You know, we.
You could also put it through, well, you could put it through community development, because.
It sounds like you kind of fixed him at all.
Yeah, well, if you did it in community development, that's where I think your CEO would maybe weigh into that and maybe supervise that division, I don't know. I mean, but again, that's where I'm thinking. So, I think if you put it under public safety committee, flush all of that stuff out.
Yep.
Who they would report to, what that department would look like, all those kinds of things, get better legal advice on where can we draw the lines on, on, on the state statutes over there.
Do we have a public safety committee?
We haven't kind of for next year yet.
I'm supposed to spell that.
Yeah.
I'm on it. I'm on it, but it's Tina, you the chair, yeah.
Thank you, counsel, for indulging me in the discussion.
Okay, next on.
All right, our second item for consideration is, uh, the First Amendment to an agreement with Census that we have, um, an advanced metering, let me see, hold on. Uh, advanced metering infrastructure system that electronically monitors and reads water meters to feed directly into the utility billing software. Uh, we previously approved a project to upgrade the system to provide added data and analytics regarding if the meters are functioning correctly. Census has proposed an amendment to the existing agreement to reflect the upgrade and comply with the FTC licensing requirement.
Counsel, any questions? Our lady can read the orders, please.
Bill number 2022-33, an ordinance approving and accepting the First Amendment to the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Agreement with Census.
Second reading.
Second.
On favor? opposed?
Bill number 2022-33, an ordinance approving and accepting the First Amendment to the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Agreement with Census.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dawson.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross. Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Hang on just a minute.
Yes.
Picture. Yeah, I can't.
There we go.
I got it. Thank you.
And Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
All in favor?
Sorry about that.
Just get my pic.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Public safety, Tina?
There's three items for consideration through the public safety committee tonight. Number one is, the police department has been successful for the last several years in obtaining grants to assist in enhanced enforcement efforts aimed at reducing hazardous traffic conditions. These grants help offset the costs primarily over time to run special operations specifically targeted at these areas. Staff recommends approval of the two ordinances authorizing the application for these grants again this year.
Counsel, any questions? Our lady, please, read the orders.
Okay, the first one is bill number 2022-34, an ordinance authorizing a grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Second reading.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Bill number 2022-34, an ordinance authorizing grant application for hazardous moving violations.
Final passage, second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross. Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
And Dawson.
Yes.
All in favor?
Our second item is, the police department has been.
I think we have a second order.
Oh, there's a second one?
Yep.
When there are two ordinance.
Yes, there are. Yes.
Sorry.
An ordinance authorizing, well, it's bill number 2022-35, an ordinance authorizing a grant application for DWI saturation enforcement.
Second reading, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Bill number 2022-35, an ordinance authorizing a grant application for DWI saturation enforcement.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross. Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
All in favor?
Now, we're ready for number two. The police department has been successful in locating a $6,098 grant that will augment the currently allocated funding to expand the use of body worn cameras to the command staff. Staff recommends approval of the resolution to accept terms of the grant.
Any questions about this resolution? Our lady, would you read a resolution, please?
Resolution 1956, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a micro grant by the Sedalia Police Department from the U.S. Department of Justice for eight body worn cameras and approving the purchase of said cameras.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, number three is, as presented during the budget work session, staff has developed an alternative to, uh, Fire Chief Wirt's strategic plan proposed initiative to add a medical response utility vehicle. Chief Wirt has located a unit that will accomplish much of the functions Chief Irwin presented, as well as provide functionality for the police department during downtown, downtown events, and help with snow plowing in tight places. Further, Chief Wirt identified surplus equipment that could be liquidated to offset the majority of the cost of this unit. Council consensus during the work session was to move forward with this plan. Staff recommends approval of the purchase to authorize ordering. The unit that will now, will not arrive until next fiscal year, but hopefully by ordering it now, will be in place for use during many of the summer events.
We have a motion to approve this purchase?
Still moved.
Second, anybody have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public Works, Thomas Hall.
There is no report.
You're kidding me.
From Public Works. The one time a year, no report.
Andrew Dawson, Community Development.
We have one item on the agenda. The resolution you have before you is, uh, the approval of a grant submission. The National Park Service's grant is in the amount of, uh, $750,000. What it would do is help with revitalization of properties that are on the National Historic Registry. Uh, the money's come, uh, to us by way of offshore drilling taxes, which are then collected and redistributed through this highly competitive process. Uh, this money would be passed to the city of Sedalia, and then in turn distributed to those properties within the historic downtown district that are on the National Registry of, uh, for renovations of roofs, etc., etc. Uh, after the submission of this grant application in six months' time, we will be notified as to whether or not we will receive the, uh, grant from the National Park Service, and these monies will go a long ways for, for permanent or stored downtown, so hopefully we'll get the application, uh, be awarded.
Does this go beyond downtown?
Uh, the way I understand it, it's just within that, it's stored downtown district, where those monies can be used.
Am I correct in that? Is it only on properties that are listed on National Registry? So, for example, we have just a very few of these currently on the.
There are downtown properties downtown on the registry.
Is there any match associated with this?
No match associated.
No match.
They, they, we become such a grant chief, they give out the money to then grant the rest of the property.
Yes.
Um, and I'd like to ask, as the mayor is saying, is it just for downtown? Because you have churches in Sedalia that are on that National Registry.
It was written for this Sedalia Commercial Historic District.
Okay, so just downtown, okay.
So we have a motion to approve. All for the resolution. So, second. Well, we have to refuse that.
Okay, resolution number 1957, a resolution authorizing the application for funding through the National Park Service's Paul Bruin Historic Revitalization Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So, my, boy, Miss, Harley?
Two members of the city council from Mayor John Cady. New appointment, Galaxy West Community Improvement District, Blake Fulton, replacing Stephanie Harris, four-year term expiring May 26, 26. And we have two reappointments to the Galaxy West Community Improvement District, Cheryl G M Balvo and Robert De La Fuente. They are four-year terms, both expiring May 26, 26.
Motion to approve and block.
On favor? All right, on the opposed? Liquor licenses, our lady, please.
We have two new licenses and one renewal. Uh, the new ones, Christie Long Doing Businesses Wildlife Ridge Winery, 34751 Miller Road, Smithville, Missouri. It's for a Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet at the venue on March 24, 22, 4 to 10. And it's located at 219 South Ohio, and it's a special event license. The next one is a new license for Jennifer Edwards Doing Businesses End Zone Sports Barn Grill, 3129 West Broadway, for downtown Sedalia Pub Crawl on March 19, uh, 22, from 12:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M., special event license. And then the renewal, Erica Eisenmenger Doing Businesses Ivory Grill, LLC, 317 South Ohio, for a sidewalk liquor license.
Motion to approve and block.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any council members, city administrator, would you like to make a few comments today? Any comments?
Yes, sir, I have something that, um, I'm sorry, that, um, that, uh, came up. Uh, a couple of things, uh, here, um, let me get it up on the screen there again. That was Steve Bliss, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah. Um, something that came up between last meeting and this meeting is Chief Wirt had in the police department budget, so, uh, this really has no effect on the bottom line, but we are moving some money around in here, so I wanted to make sure that we were, uh, completely transparent about it and, and make sure the council was on board with what we, um, what we, what we've done. Uh, since the, uh, the work session, that, so the, it, this is still showing the same numbers that you were seeing before, but that we added this plea, this place, this piece in here where Walmart, we have applied for and usually get $1,000 from them. And so that's what, uh, Chief Wirt had in, had in his budget, and that was in equipment, uh, to, to spend those, that $1,000. Walmart is coming back and, and actually awarded $2,500. And so, uh, for that $2,500, that allows him to get to basically an upgraded pants that they can do, that, uh, I think it's reinforced cross seams and those kinds of things, so that'll last longer and wear better and, and be more comfortable. One of the things with the Walmart grants is, is they, they really want you to spend it with them, so, which is fair enough. So, um, uh, so what we'd like to do, or what we're recommending is, is to, uh, first of all, increase the, uh, revenue amount by 1,500 to get us up to the 2,500, and then move the $1,000 from equipment to the uniforms, and then add the other 1,500 into the uniforms to, to make a $2,500, um, uh, line item for the uniforms to, to get into those pants. And it's also the same brand that the shirts are, right? So, I lose anything else, Chief, or?
Absolutely.
You all good with that?
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay, so I, I did make those changes in there, in that, in that. Um, the other thing is, is I wanted to remind everybody, March 18, 10:00 A.M.
What is, what is the, what are we doing?
Well, we're gonna have a little celebration.
Oh.
We're gonna do some ribbon cutting and, um, uh, those kinds of things, maybe a speech or two. Um, but, uh, at the Hecker Community Center, it's, it's really coming together well. Parks and Rec Department are absolutely killing themselves, getting everything pulled together and, and ready for all of this.
I think the governor's coming, Sam.
Yeah, I believe the governor may make an appearance, so, um, uh, that's what I've heard anyway, so. Uh, just, just wanted to remind everybody of that and invite everybody to, to come out and bring your swimming trunks or whatever else you want, or.
And I urge the mayor to be, have to make a big speech.
No, that's your job. That's all you. And then the only thing else, uh, I, I did, uh, on the, uh, you'll notice on the agenda there, you've got a couple of extra items for the closed door. Uh, an issue just came up today, uh, that we were unaware of, so it was not in posted, but, uh, I just wanted to say that we wanted to add to the closed door session reasons for closed door session, number, section, under section three and 13, for personnel matters and, and personnel records.
Anybody else in the council?
I think we need to acknowledge Coach Joe Gay. He is, this is, he has won the Missouri Parks and Rec Coach of the Year. So, acknowledge him, he won it two years ago, 2019, so, so this is second time he's won it. Just, good job, Coach Joe.
Cool, cool, cool.
Anybody out there in this large audience we have tonight, like to make any comments?
Very none, Your Honor. I would make a motion that we go into closed session in regards to the reserves, or whatever it is, the six tent of the 21.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna go there, um, sections one, two, three, and 13.
Second.
All favor? Roll call, please.
Lehman?
I'm going up there.
Oldham?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross? Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss, are you coming with us?
Uh, I'm gonna cry, I don't have any email, Kevin, Kevin, you know.
Bring me some fish, Steve.
What kind of fish did he cook?
I have one fish in here.
Okay, uh, everybody online, I have to end this session for, uh, for me to start the others. Well, I guess, and so, it's, it's gonna go away, and I'll, uh, restart it when, uh, we come back to open, but really the only thing in the open is to adjourn now.
Did you hear me say I don't have any email?
Councilman Bliss, I will send you a closed door link for the next meeting.
Okay.